Thanks, bud. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District to order. We've had our roll call. I will open the meeting for public comments if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak on a non-agendized item, we'll do that now. Seeing nobody rushing forward. We, with the indulgence of the board, we're gonna move item four, the request for an additional vacation quitclaim, up to the first study, so you folks don't all have to sit here and listen to us babble on about other...
Okay.
Ah, yeah. So, we'll go to item four then, and Rob, I think you're making this report?
Thank you, Mr. President and the board members. Yes, this is subject matter that was started approximately two years ago, and at that point in time, there wasn't an address for the property. It's in Harbor Gate Lane, we refer to it as CNIC, because there were two properties next to it that had an address. So, we worked our way through a quitclaim deed and indemnification agreement for the sanitary district to vacate or quitclaim approximately 290 feet of our sewer system, along with manholes and sewer lathes, in order for the property owner, of which we have four representatives here today, two of which have seen before, they were going to sell the property to a buyer, and a lot of land adjustments were done to affect the change to give them the property they actually desired. So, we worked our way through this with them. Our council prepared the indemnification agreement, however, by, it went from our council to both buyer's council and also landowner's council, so it was worked over by three parties to satisfy everybody. And everything got completed, and we were standing by, waiting for plans to be submitted. And then, all of a sudden, we got notice that the buyer was no longer in the picture. So, the property owner, CJ Scherstrom, subsequently decided to build the building themselves and most likely rent it out. And to do that, they require another lot configuration to achieve the size building that they wanted. So, what we have now is a second request for the same thing. Rather than try to undo what we did the first time, it would work out just nice to do a second quitclaim deed and a second indemnification agreement, and when those two added together would be the exact same as if this was all done in one fell swoop. So, this staff report is more of a request for approval and concept by the board, or just discussion today, and made the approval and concept at the board meeting later in May. A couple of finer points are that plans have been submitted, so they are moving along, and we find the plans to be well-prepared. The lot line adjustment has been reviewed, everything appears to be in order. We do have the buyer's represent-- I'm sorry, the landowner's representative has offered to prepare the new quitclaim and the new indemnification agreement, which I accepted that on behalf of the district since, although our council started it out last time, it ended up at the other council's office. And regardless of who prepares it, it will go through our council and satisfy the board. So, at that point, here we are today, and when we were in one of our previous meetings, we had some discussion about the cost of vacating the sewer, whether we were ever compensated for it, or what's the book value loss by quitclaiming and all that, and the district chose not to place any charges on the property owner for quitclaiming and abandoning that sewer easement, considering that they built them for us back in 1981, 82. So, the sewer's been there on this vacant lot since then, and the indemnification agreement is so that when they prepare the site for the new building, whether they remove the sewer in its entirety, or whether they leave it underground and fill it full of something, then it's their responsibility to make sure that it doesn't cause their buildings any problem. The last fine point was that our previous finance manager, I believe, made it clear to the applicant that the district would seek reimbursement of attorney and engineering costs for this entire effort, since it's taken some time to review documents, prepare. It went on for two years the first time, and here we are going through it again. To date, nothing has been transmitted to the property owner in way of a request for reimbursement, but it is mentioned in the staff report that that is certainly on the table for the board to reconfirm that. So, with that, I'm available to answer any questions. Jeff Reese is here. He has spoken in front of you quite a few times, and if you have any questions or would like to hear from him, that would be appropriate.
In essence, this morning, we're just revising the original agreement, or we're not revising, we're doing a second agreement, an additional agreement.
Right.
Which will be brought back to us for discussion and approval if the board meeting is the end of the month.
What kind of cost do we talk about, ballpark?
For the engineering and attorney?
Morning.
I don't know, nothing's been added up as far as labor costs. We could bring that to you at the board meeting, let you know what costs we've incurred along those lines, so that you have an idea, but at this point, I don't.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to have it at the board meeting, when we look at the final decision.
I don't know, Jeff, I don't know that we're gonna have final docs be ready by the end of this month. I mean, we need, Nolani, what's our deadline, please, for staff report?
Fifteen.
Do you have to have the complete staff report done by the fifteenth, and that might be rushing to the beginning of June, maybe wait till June or something?
So, bring this back in June?
If you would like the costs on the regular agenda and later this month, we can do that, or we can, if you want to do any formal action, I don't know if you want to approve in concept right now, or just direct staff to continue, or bring back those costs, and at the May board meeting, whatever you'd like us to do, we'd be happy to do.
I guess, from the standpoint that we've done this, we know, we pretty much know what direction we're going, we've already set a precedent for what we're gonna do. If it's not too much of an inconvenience for staff and for the applicant, I'd rather have the final package with all, if that has to wait till June, if that's not a problem for the applicant or staff.
But we could approve in concept.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're all in agreement that we're gonna, you know, in concept, we're gonna approve it.
Okay, I need that.
Do you want to approve it in concept at the board meeting, or at this meeting?
We're not gonna do it at this meeting, we're not.
Okay, so, we'll bring back a report, and it will be to approve this in concept, and it will also show the cost to date for attorney and engineering costs.
Okay, that's...
The board has a handle on that.
That's, that's okay. All right, good.
Our engineering tech is currently working on the remainder of the development fees, which are usual and customary.
Who's working on that? Our project's manager?
No, it's Baal.
Oh, Baal, okay.
And Steve will participate also.
He gets back my schedule.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Rob or the applicant?
I'll do it, Joe.
Okay, then that, is that clear direction then, Robbie Scott?
Jeff, you have anything to add?
Yeah, Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I have just one question, um, with the, with this one. Not having to do it down the identification, but you know, quarter, but that's all about the stuff I'm talking about.
When do you have this phase starting?
It was in the next, um, four, five days.
Well, the, the meeting is June what, Nolani?
Twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth.
Well, we're probably looking at the June meeting to bring back the final doc.
But I mean, if we approve in concept at the May meeting, that shouldn't hold up construction, right?
June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eighth. So, we'll check your schedule.
Do you have a particular program, specifically rock defenses, uh, and Spanish, or whatever?
Sure.
It's really hard, but we have content, because pretty close to the one that's in the, 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 so, we're getting back to the, 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 the work, and we're looking to, 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 to.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would say we have an indemnification agreement, and if something goes wrong and creates liability in that interim, and that indemnification agreement hasn't been signed, that might be a problem.
Yeah, from my personal life, I could see that.
Can we get that done by the fifteenth, though?
Why wouldn't you need us to, 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 uh...
Well, we'd have to have the quitclaim and the indemnification agreement approved by our council, and then we put that with the staff report, the new staff report, and then it would go to the board meeting.
I think it would be very logical, and, and, so, we, we, but it probably happens after you by tomorrow.
Okay, Alan or...
Thanks for saying, 'cause that's what I was thinking, we've done this once already. There really, in council, there's nothing different except the addition of, just the numbers, so, we can do that.
If it happens after that tomorrow, does that allow you to, to, by fifteen?
I'm, I have plenty of time, Alan.
Sure. We're looking at your watch.
It has a date on it. I don't keep that close.
Casey, we have a week to get it done.
He talks into his watch a lot, too.
Hey, that happens. This is Dick Tracy world, don't we? Some of you young people don't know who Dick Tracy is, don't... It's okay, then, we have that direction, we'll try to get it done for the May board meeting.
So, if that, if necessary, come there.
Yeah, in terms of the total cost, I mean, we can discuss that at any point, we don't need to have a...
We'll see it at the May meeting regardless.
Okay. Okay, that works? All right, thank you all for your patience and sticking with us. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
No problem.
I tell these guys, having suits in the audience makes me nervous.
Wear jeans next time.
Oh, great. All right, let's go, by the way, just, I'm, just to let the board know, we've noticed there's no organics or solid waste report. This is kind of a, we talked about this yesterday at the agenda review, this is kind of a, an anomaly month, because the second Tuesday is so quick, so we're asking staff to come back in June with a double report on those items, if that's okay with everybody? Okay, great. Let's go to the alkaline battery program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Navia Guzman will be giving this report.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. This year's battery recycling program took place between September 2017 and March 2018. A total of eighteen schools participated, and they collected eight thousand seven hundred and twenty pounds of batteries, which is amazing. The staff report illustrates a chart, includes a chart illustrating the schools ranked by the total weight of battery, batteries collected, and as you can see, four schools collected over a thousand pounds of batteries. Staff is recommending that the award amounts be increased and that their reward structure be based on the school's collection efforts. The proposed breakdown is also included in the staff report. First place would get fifteen hundred dollars, second place a thousand dollars, third place eight hundred, and if they collected over a thousand batteries, they would get five hundred dollars. Five hundred to nine hundred ninety-nine, they would get three hundred and fifty. A hundred to four hundred and ninety-nine pounds would receive a three hundred dollar reward, and if they collected between fifty and ninety-nine pounds, they would get a two hundred dollar reward. If the reward amounts were to be applied to this year's contest, an additional a thousand four hundred and fifty would have been paid out, which is still well below the total program budget. Their proposed new reward structure will allow for further growth in the program without increasing the budget. Total cost for this year's program, including reward and recycling of the batteries, was twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And we will be busy the rest of the month doing check presentations. Thank you, I just, thank you, board members, for signing up for those presentations, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can we get an updated list sometime today or tomorrow on the schools that you emailed, the ones that you don't have covered, to us?
Okay.
Um, this is the largest number of schools we ever had in the program, isn't it? So, the word's getting out that there's free money to these. Personally, I, I like the idea of changing the reward. If you look at what they currently, you know, someone who turned in ten pounds of battery got, I'm sorry, who turned in forty-nine pounds of battery got three hundred dollars, and then someone who turned in eleven hundred pounds of batteries still only got three hundred. So, I like that sliding scale, I think it gives more incentive to them to get more involved in the program, you know, so, Bob?
Well, I'm not a fan of changing the numbers, not the top number. I'm not a fan of going, increasing the first place to fifteen hundred dollars. We're still sort of in a pilot situation, we've done this program for two or three years. We are seeing increased participation. I do believe, though, I do agree with President Schaefer, that, you know, some amendments need to be made to the bottom process. If you, Harper School is an extremely small school, their children probably don't participate in the program, it's the staff that does, you know, they're extremely small staff. I think they should be rewarded, but probably not at the present level. So, I would be in favor of adjusting the, you know, the lower, lower amounts, but I don't believe there's any necessity or any advantage or purpose that we gain by just giving out more money, you know, to the top school. The top school's going to perform, and they're gonna perform well, no matter what the award is, they always have in every program that we've done. So, I'm not in favor of giving out an increased first-place money.
I agree with Bob, that's what I was gonna comment on also. And looking at T-Winkle, only had forty-nine pounds, you see three hundred, and Ray, forty-four pounds, and you just see zero. If we could have a sliding scale to represent everyone that participates, I think it'd be a better way to go. Even, it doesn't have to be three hundred, but it could be fifty dollars, or a dollar a battery, or something like that, just, 'cause I was, I went to Ray's junior high, a lot of these I did.
Yeah, I think. So, let's massage those numbers, maybe, Jim's got a comment.
Uh, is, where does this money come from to fund this program? Is it our general fund, or is it CRNR, or...
What's the, what's the...
A what?
Oh, okay. And we budget this now, or, or, what's that, budgeted, we budgeted?
How did we, I guess I don't remember, how did we, how did we do the fund, the fund books? Didn't we do it something, so, do you remember?
You know, absolutely, I mean, I, I, as a small president, uh, Director Oom, just about two years doing this program, you know, it's not, I don't consider it a kind of a program anymore, it's probably, and we try to find a result, and, and, and for that reason, I have no, I have no, this guy, I have no, it's been so long since I've been in, I have no idea what we did, I have, I have some, I have one of them.
I think it's, you know, with all the input from us up here, I think it is worth taking a look at, and if we just changed the bottom, so be it, but I, you know, I didn't realize that, yeah, for five more pounds of batteries, they could've got three hundred bucks, so we need to get some, I think everybody should get something.
Either they don't, like, they don't have it?
No, if they have to, they have to have X amount, but even if...
Look at paid school doing ten pounds of batteries, paid school is even smaller than Harper, I mean, it's a private, very, very small, so...
Harper is actually special needs, you know, and, you know, I just wanna say, I've already started going to the school, and, you know, the parents come too, a lot of the parents are there, and they just thank you so much, you know, they're so appreciative of it, and it gives them excitement to be able to start saving again for next year, you know, it kinda makes you feel good, but...
I disagree with, with Director, it's not the staff that's collecting batteries, it's mom and dad that are, like, I mean, we've all been there, so...
And we're giving you buckets, right?
We have buckets, now for parents to take home and fill up with batteries.
Yeah.
The, 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 the proposed award breakdown, you have to see on the screen in there itself, as in, the board does not want this first place fifteen hundred dollars, but everything else, I get, I, 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 I'm not comfortable with fifteen hundred dollars first place, I think.
Or second place a thousand. I, you know, I, we're seeing increased participation, and that's the reason I said this is a pilot program. Apparently, the word is just still getting out, and I think we need to continue to work on getting the word out, to the schools that are not participating.
But don't forget, we're doing it to, to the needs level, and that's getting out to everybody.
But I, it sounds to me like third place down is where we ought to look at.
And maybe use that additional money that we were gonna get to supplement the three bottom schools, maybe based on per battery, a dollar per battery, it'd get forty-five dollars.
Unless you have more, you, you throw the fifty pounds, you know, or...
Yeah, that's, that's a big one, one to fifty.
Yeah, one to fifty, a hundred bucks.
But we already have T-Winkle, forty-nine, giving three hundred, so you'd have to adjust that some way.
Well, we're not gonna change this year, right?
Well, you were talking about changing this year, 'cause they have the money available.
No, we were talking about changing it for next year.
Oh, for next year, okay, okay, oh, I thought you said you had additional money this year.
No, the, the current award breakdown, what is how we advertise programs, we're gonna stick to that.
Okay, sounds good.
Pro, pro, for the next year.
Okay, that sounds good.
So, are you okay with the forward award breakdown next year, and if we turn it out, hundred dollars for one fifty pounds?
Okay. Yeah. But are you mean, you're still gonna use that fifteen hundred as a top price?
For next year.
Yeah, well, that's what Bob's saying, we don't, I really...
I disagree with that.
I do, too, I think we need to keep it...
I think you need to leave first and second place unaltered. At least first, leave first place unal-- give us a couple of options, look at that.
If you could, yeah, bring it back to the study session, I mean...
And, and add, and then, and then apply what staff is recommending to the present program to see how much we would spend.
Yes, if we would apply to the new proposed award breakdown for this year, we would've spent an additional a thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
We're throwing just fourteen hundred dollars in.
And we budget twenty thousand annually.
I don't care what we budgeted.
Well, I'd say, but it'd be an additional fourteen hundred dollars if we went, if we...
I know, and it would be under the budget, and that, that's where I'd like to stay.
Yes, we budget twenty thousand annually.
We're saying it's not gonna go to budget, and so, we're throwing the budget, and it's just costing fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, but I think the amount of fifteen hundred dollars is too excessive, personally, that's what Bob's saying, basically.
Okay, next one, Bob?
Do you think that three lowest schools saying they're gonna get zero this year are going to participate next year?
Yes, Christian, um, actually got, collected more batteries last, last year.
Did they all free you money last time?
Everyone, but...
Ray didn't do anything, I'm sure.
Yeah, they didn't, they, they haven't collected over fifty pounds in the last couple of years.
Which is a surprise to me, because they have some pretty active parents at Ray's school, you know, they really do.
It really just depends on the teacher, there's gotta be someone that's supportive of the program, getting the word out, giving the flyers out, talking to people.
I'm disappointed in the high schools, 'cause they have time and effort that they could go to every classroom, like I did, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think Director Schaefer's, or Director Oom's correct, it's, I think one of these, why some schools are sophisticated, is they don't wanna put the effort in.
And somebody who ever's in charge just won't put the effort in.
That's why, you know, that's why Davis does so well, 'cause that's, that's their mission, yeah, that's what they do so well every, every year.
High school kids save their batteries, take to sporting events, throw up the other team.
I don't think so, but...
Okay.
All right, so, we'll come back, study session, or you want us to come back at the board meeting? 'Cause it is an action item, we're gonna increase it, so we'll come back on the board later this month.
Let's look at the alternatives of the study session. Okay. We have plenty of time, it's not like we're gonna do it right away anyway, so, that's okay. Okay, item two?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, to recap, back in April this year, the board appointed residents to serve on the CMSD's Citizens Advisory Committee, and the purpose of, of the committee was to give residents an opportunity to become more involved in the community, advising the board on key issues and programs and policies.
And as you see in your, in your staff report, our first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May fifteenth, at six PM, and we do have a proposed agenda that will go out later this week, and I'd like to kinda go over that agenda with you today. So, the agenda would, would start with President Schaefer welcoming the, the committee, and then we would do like a quick roundtable of introductions. Each committee member will have with them a copy of the CAC guidelines, responsibilities, and handbook, and we'll briefly go over the guidelines and their responsibilities. The handbook has a little more, more, more pages to it, and, and so, we encourage the community members to take that back and read it, the handbook. And then, the committee will appoint a chairperson, and once that chairperson is appointed, according to the handbook, that chairperson would meet with me and President Schaefer to discuss proposed goals and, for the upcoming year, what issues they wanna talk about. Then they'll appoint a vice chair, and once the chair and vice chair is, is appointed, they'll take public comments in the public. And then the next item on the agenda was, is the Citizens Environment Protection Academy, and that's where Gina will, will go over the success that we just had the last few days. Several of the committee members did attend that academy, and we're hoping that they will say a few words of their, about their experience, and then we're gonna encourage those who did not attend to attend the next academy, which we're scheduling for September this year. And then we'll give a brief overview of CMSD, and I felt probably the easiest way to do is to show them the, the video that we did for the state of the district that we currently show in the lobby, or to show them that video, I think that's a really good overview of the, of the district. And then according to the, the guidelines, the guideline says that the, the board can assign special assignments to the, to the CAC, and what we have on the agenda is the special assignment is, is the voting districts, which you'll be considering later, later this afternoon. If you approve the resolution that's before you today about district voting, what we'll encourage, the, the next, it would be, we'll have a, a public hearing at your next board meeting, May twenty-fourth, where the demographer will come out and give a presentation about district voting. And we will encourage the committee members to attend that meeting. According to the guidelines, they have to attend at least one board meeting, and so that will, that will achieve that objective. If they can't attend the May's board meeting, good thing is that we do videotape our board meetings, so we encourage them to at least watch the meeting and, and, and hear from the demographer why we're, why we're doing district voting and how that works. And then, we'll talk about, they will have time for comments from the committee members, comments from staff or board members, and then the committee will establish a regular meeting day and time. And as, as the district voting issue is, we have a deadline by August eleventh, it gets the district's vote, voting lines to be approved, I foresee that it can be meeting several times up to August eleventh. After that, then, you know, be up to them, most likely meet on a quarterly basis, but the, the, the goal, to have that item, is, is to find out what is, what is the best time for them to meet, what's their availability. We, we learned that this meeting coming up on Tuesday, there was already some conflict with a couple of committee members, and we wanna avoid that in the future, we wanna find a date and time that works out for all of them. And then we adjourn, you know, that proposed guideline, our proposed meeting for Tuesday.
I think one of the things, and I don't know if you mentioned this, if we went over it, we need to discuss the elements of the BRON Act, but, um...
Yes, there's all, yeah... Yes, that's all, yes, that's part of the guideline, that's part of the, uh, the, um, uh, guidelines and responsibilities, and also identifying the handbook, um, how to run the meetings, uh, that are open to public, that we do have to comply with the BRON Act on this side of them, yes.
I have two questions, um, on the fifteenth, did any of us come to? And then the other one was, is the twenty-fourth also when, um, we have our public hearing?
It's, we have to have, and I'll have, this is gonna go in more detail, but we have to have at least five public hearings before, uh, the August eleventh, and so we can use August twenty-fourth as the first public hearing.
That's only for the district meeting.
Say that again?
About the public meetings, we have to have five public, yeah, public hearings, and we can use the May, May twenty-fourth being as the first public hearing.
On the, on the district?
On the district, yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
Uh, where did the five come from, is that, um?
And we're kinda getting ahead of item number five here a little bit, so.
Do you anticipate the meeting being longer than an hour with the committee?
Yeah.
I think we don't wanna drag it out.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, maybe at the most two hours when we just kind of.
I think the first meeting or two is they're getting used to doing things, you know, just getting a chairman or a vice chairman and all that. The first meeting might go a little over an hour, but I don't think it will.
Are, are you gonna chair that meeting?
I'm gonna just kick it off, and then we'll have the election fairly close at the beginning of it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll point their own chairperson, so, but, but, but according to the guidelines, we have one board member serving on that committee, but they don't have their own chair, it's kinda like a, more like an advisory, like, capacity.
And that's an item we probably should have at the board meeting, deciding who's gonna be the, the liaison to that, or.
I hope you guys did that last, last, last meeting, but I don't think we got a clear direction, who's gonna be that liaison person.
How do we decide we'll take turns, maybe we all do?
No, no, like, it's six, it's like a six month, remember I suggested that second person, like an ad hoc committee, that they're gonna just be observing, and then they're gonna step in the spot when that person leaves.
The two of us, each meeting?
Possibly, I mean, just so there's a, uh, continual line of organization, you know?
And understanding.
Of understanding what's been going on, because, you know, if none of us came to the meeting for the first six months, we wouldn't know the direction it was taking. That was what I was thinking.
Well, obviously, I'll be the first liaison person, and we'll work it out from there. Okay, any other questions, Bill? Yeah, you're, I agree, it's welcome. The more, I, I think having as many of us here, I think that's a good sign.
Do you, do you think, not many of these people know each other, you know, it'd be, might, it'd be difficult to assign that, like, the person's gonna run the meeting, they don't know each other yet.
Well, I think at the beginning of the meeting, I'll just call on each one of them to introduce themselves, you know, to give, you know, a quick little background of who, where they come from, who they are, and what they do.
You know, but Scott wants them to, you wanna have, you, you want them to assign somebody that's gonna be the leader that night, and I'll do the difficult thing if they don't know each other, that's what I'm saying.
One of the things, I know when we did, I hate to bring up the source subject, but when we did the sixtieth anniversary committee, um, staff, city staff asked people to put their names up, and I don't know why I did, but I put my name up. So, that maybe is to communicate with them with the agenda, just an extra note saying, if you're interested in chairing or being vice chair of the committee, please let us know if at a time, maybe?
That's a good idea, that way we have a.
That way they're not staring at a cold committee meeting.
Come on up.
Have to decide from bylaws what it entails, you know?
I mean, looking at all their resumes, I think, I think we're gonna be okay, I mean, there's, like I said, pretty high power stuff in there. Anything else on item two? And then we'll go to item three, Gina, I guess you're in charge there, or Scott?
No, I'm just doing the report.
Quarterly legislative update? Aren't they all gone? Or is it the end of this week they're gone? There was a lot of them on the airplane last Thursday coming back, I know that.
They always on the first one.
Thank you, Gina, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Now, before you do our second quarter legislative process this year, I'm just gonna go over briefly the bill that we have on our support and focus. So, what we are supporting those, we have A B one ninety-six, which is the greenhouse gas reduction fund, water supply, and resource protection. This bill has authorized, Alex is gonna have funding, and we didn't have that reduction fund, so we took this, uh, water and energy quality system, and. There's probably, uh, probably even less gas funding available, we didn't send a letter of support to this bill in February, uh, building not been acted on, and we didn't, and we didn't have the proper. So, we're just gonna continue to keep our eye on it and monitor it in this committee. Um, sending in hard workers, they're going to be relevant, and they did not get sponsored by the government, so they're probably not gonna have it, so. Essentially, we have A B two zero three, which I'm gonna have a contract that says it's in the district, so. This bill is sponsored by an income and education district, and we need to update the contract notification process for the community district. Firstly, it requires thirty-five thousand dollars in cost, this is not a contract that will load this contract or deliver after a notice that we're supposed to have, and we require the ownership. The closing requirements are very specific, we have to be focused on twice, more than five days apart from the end of the year. So, this is also a team that, that it would definitely just be bored to decide what is appropriate, uh, and what is going to be the critical factor. And we can use, uh, we can go outside, we will, so they don't have any other form, and we can have a consultation, uh, we just can't, we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't. So, it's also kind of a, a question, so, in that way, it is not going to be built on, it's gonna be made up.
Is that just for the same committee, this is, uh, any other?
Um, I believe the, 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 um, so.
We did not expect that.
Oh. All right, and the last bill we are supporting is S B nine twenty-nine, and that's for websites for special districts. This bill is, um.
Being supported by C S D A, and it would require all special districts to have their own website, since, since many special districts in California still don't. Um, it would include some.
I'm trying to put any districts that it might be a hardship for, and C M S D is supporting the bill, um, arguing that the.
On to the recommendations of the Little Hoover Commission, um, in order to increase special district transparency.
I understand there were some really small districts that, that really would bonkers over this, 'cause they have no resources to do it. So, I think that accommodation was added later, or, or added in there somewhere, because, you know, some of these districts up in Northern California that have, like, three board members, and maybe ones that they, they balked at that, so.
I sit on the ledge coming, and it's just, President Schaefer says, you know, we decided that we'd give that little op on there, because some of them are so small, they just have two or three employees, it's kinda unfair.
A little proposition left, so.
Really?
Well, there's a couple, a couple of, um, community service districts that have homeowners association websites and, and minimal, um, public websites, and they're, with this process, they're, they're just gonna move more of the information that the homeowners get on, you know, make that much more available to, to the, uh, to the public. And so they can, they have websites, they just aren't public websites, or minimal public websites.
But they're probably not in special districts.
No, they are, they are special districts.
I mean, they're not a member. They, they could be a special district, an association, but.
No, well, there are special districts that I've visited, and they have, and they're four homeowners associations. So, they're small. But they can make the changes easily. In Orange County, I don't, I can't speak for the other thousand that don't have them. Thank God.
I believe all they have to do is pass the regulation, and, um, they just gotta be popping, and they're, and they're, and they're. And this bill, uh, the board is living on my different, so, uh, depending on how they're doing, they're, they're, they're not watching their, uh, they're not, they're not.
About this one as well. And then we have two, a proposed bill, uh, the first one is A B two nine one six for property tax revenue allocations for qualified fire protection districts. If passed, this bill would require the county auditor to reduce the amount of ad valorem property tax revenues from all other local agencies and increase the amount allocated to fire protection districts. Um, the bill language currently doesn't specify to what degree the property tax revenues would be reduced for other agencies, um, so it seems like there may be more amendments coming, and we're gonna keep our eye on that one as well. And then lastly, we have S B six twenty-three, which is the Water Quality Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund, um, essentially the water tax bill. Um, it's going to establish water fees that would be imposed on all customers of a public water system, and the district did send a letter of opposition to this bill in April. Um, Senator Morlock did vote in favor of this bill, but it has not gone to Harper for a vote yet, so we will talk to Harper about it.
Senator Morlock voted in favor of the bill?
We just have to talk to him when we're up there in the West.
It's too late. That's a surprise.
No, that's okay, we're still talking.
Um, and so, just for the legislative calendar, the last day for each.
House of Commons that was introduced in their own house is June first, and then the last day for each house to pass any remaining bills is August thirty-first,
and then the last day for the governor to sign or veto any bills, uh, passed by the legislature is September thirtieth. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Is that water bill, is that a two-year bill? Do you know?
Um, I.
I think it is, isn't it, I think that's what I remember, but.
Probably long.
Yeah, it was a two, no, it doesn't, it's a two-year looking at the bill, and it's not gonna come into effect now if it gets approved, it's gonna take two years to get approval. If you could, I think, I think, I think that's correct, but.
I think it says twenty twenty is when they, when implemented, if they choose to go forward with it.
Okay, okay.
Remember I asked you about that, a couple of those bills and the one about the water bottle? Remember talking about the, with the little, with the cap stays with it?
Yeah.
Some are already doing that. Yeah, it blew me away, so. Lot of extra money.
Is it, what type of cap is it, plastic cap?
It's really, it's like this, except it, there's a little.
No, but don't the recyclers, they don't take this cap?
Yeah, they recycle.
Oh, do they?
Oh, they do now?
No. O, O C C takes, they take them off and they throw them in the road.
That's what I'm saying, it's kinda.
In the road?
Well, they just toss them down.
They can't re-recycle them.
Yeah.
I'm surprised if they attach them, but. You can go over and collect those caps if you.
Gina, thank you.
Always good to talk, appreciate it.
Okay, let's go to item five, Scott.
Thank you. First, the given's report.
Alan.
Thank you, Miss, Mr. President, members of the board, and Scott. As you know, we've received a letter from Attorney Schenkman alleging that we have racially polarized voting or otherwise, we have diluted voting for certain protected groups, and, uh, he's made a, uh, challenge to us under the California Voting Rights Act, which generally prohibits at-large elections if it, if it, uh, ends up with those two results. The, uh, California Voting Rights Act is a little more liberal than, and, um, than the Federal Voting Rights Act, and it includes an inability to influence, uh, elections as one of the grounds in which you can bring one of these challenges. Doesn't have to be that a, uh, person of a protected group did not get, uh, elected, it can be, they can show it by showing racially polarized voting on issues that are, um, important to certain protected groups. We believe we may have those conditions in the district, we don't know for sure, 'cause we haven't done our study yet, but we know that the city and the Nasa Water District, who has somewhat, has some of its boundaries with us, have made those determinations. So, we do need to look at this. If the plaintiff prevails, uh, he is entitled to attorney's fees, the plaintiff being the attorney, and, uh, it's a very low bar to recover. And the, um, damage is going to be substantial. The law does provide a limitation on the damages to thirty thousand dollars plus, uh, profit of living, I think it's up to about thirty-two thousand now, writing the letter and doing whatever research you did to write the letter, uh, if we do two things. One, we have to do the resolution of intention to adopt the, uh, uh, solution, and we have done, uh, you will be doing that today if you approve the resolution in front of you. And that, uh, we have to do that within forty-five days, and we're within that time limit. And then secondly, we have to implement, uh, by ordinance, a, uh, solution which most likely includes, uh, voting districts by August eleventh. Of course, that means after you review this matter on your own and determine that the conditions are right, and to do that, we've been required to hire a demographer, and we have done that, and it's Edward Depp, and she's a well-known demographer, she's worked on a lot of the different, uh, cities, uh, in this area, she's out of Cal State Fullerton. Uh, so she, you will be seeing her, she'll make your next presentation about the Voting Rights Act and the numbers and how she did her research, and it should be pretty interesting. As Scott has mentioned, we are required to have five public hearings, uh, some you have to have before you start talking about math, and then some you have to have after, you actually have the, the data in front of you, and you can start, um, thinking about what makes sense. There are certain standards you have to have, and how you set the districts up, they have to be within certain percentages of each other, of course, different, you know, gerrymandering and all that. Um, the, as Scott has indicated, the, uh, and as the board knows, the Cali, the Citizens Advisory Committee was formed, uh, our major purpose of that was to assist us with this task before we got the letter, and so they will be, we will be, um, employing them to give advice to the board and maybe to take some of the early public hearings.
The board will.
Obviously, the, uh, end result decision on what they do, if the solution is warranted. Uh, you will be entitled, next meeting, to have a closed session on this, and we'll do that before the meeting, because you have been threatened by, uh, you know, attorney who's intending to sue you if you don't do certain things, so we will have an opportunity to have a closed session. We'll have the meeting with, uh, Deborah, the demographer, and, uh, it'll be your first introduction to the whole topic, and you'll get it, it should be, uh, an interesting and informative meeting. You have any questions?
I don't care, a city right now, who's, um, saying they're not gonna do it?
The only city I know of is, uh, Mission Viejo, and, um, I think it's just fighting, I didn't, I didn't know.
I thought it was in Beachville, no?
Yeah, Scott's telling me it's in Beachville, and I wasn't aware of that. Uh, Mission Viejo apparently has like seventeen percent, and the population, uh, is, uh, executive groups and Hispanic group, and, uh, whatever the right word is, they're at, and they, uh, that percentage is pretty evenly distributed through the city, so it's hard to see how this district can help Mission Viejo help that group in any way, electorally, because no matter how you slice it, it's still gonna be seventeen percent. So, I don't know what Mission Viejo is gonna do, but other cities have not caught it, and we'll look at what I've, have, has done and why, and, uh, that'll be in the next, remember this, if you adopt this, this is resolution of intention, doesn't commit you to doing it, but it, it says, this is our proposed solution, if we decide to do a solution, if we determine that we have a problem.
So, how far into it do we go, in other words, if we do a, an adoption of a resolution, before the committee, the advisor committee tells us that, you say, aren't we doing a cartwheel of horse?
Well, we only have forty-five days to, uh, adopt this resolution, and it's a resolution of intention, um, and it, it does require the public hearing, and it does require the, the finding on the final solution, so, uh, yes, it is, uh, committing to the study, it's not the only, uh, other option, is to say we're not, we're not studying.
Say, adopting the resolution, it doesn't change the fact that we're getting input from the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Absolutely, yeah.
We're still, that's part of the process of looking at it.
Possible, the Citizens Advisory Committee could say, you don't have. Possible the Citizens Advisory Committee could say, you don't have a problem, or districts, is there one solution, or, and you can come back and see, also, based on what the demographers say.
I'm not, the city council, our city council, took three years, somebody told me that, to decide that they would go into districts, and that this is the first time they're doing.
It didn't take three years, and maybe, look, you, you, you were familiar with the process. It was about a, it was less than a year that they went, for all the hearings and all that, right?
It, it, it was less than a year, for the, the process of actually drawing maps through the public hearing, to that effect.
So they went into this just like you're supposed to, like...
And like a march through April of 2016?
Yeah.
And they have the actual, the dog, like, the, the, the...
This is going to affect the next election cycle?
2020. Explain to me the process with the public hearings, what we have to do, how they're to be conducted, um, what are the logistics for pub, we're not gonna have five board, I mean, we typically, our public hearing is the board meeting, we're not gonna have five board meetings before August, and so we're gonna have to have special meetings called public hearings, like the city did, invite the public to come to this, right?
Correct. And some of them you may have just the Citizens Advisory Committee conducting them.
That could be part of the public hearing? Or one of the public hearings?
That is it. It only has to be the district that conducts the public hearing, it doesn't have to be the actual governing body. The only thing you have to do is, uh, adopt this resolution and then adopt any final solution.
Okay. Which is kinda what the city council is...
So actually, if we're not to get this year's election, if it, if it, if it, it would be 20, 2020, okay?
We need to adopt that right now, Alan?
Resolution of intention, we need to adopt it.
I'll move for adoption of the resolution.
I'll take it. Before we take any action on this item, I'm gonna open it up, you guys don't mind?
No, no, yeah, we need to, you hear from...
We have a request for public, so can we put the motion in the second on hold?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moser, you have a card, fill it out.
Yes. Uh, thank you, President Schaefer and members of the board, my name is Jim Moser. Um, uh, first of all, it's unusual for the board to be adopting a resolution, especially one of the significance at a study session in the afternoon, rather than a board meeting. I gather from the staff report that that is to meet the 45-day time limit from receiving the letter. The staff report there doesn't say when the letter was received, and I do not know. Uh, I assume your next board meeting would be too late, and that's why it's being done today, but again, I do not know if that's the reason. More importantly than that, I didn't have time to look up the Elections Code section and read that, and I do not know and do not understand from the staff report, since this will not be effective until two years from now, 2020, where the August 11th deadline came from. August 11th is, whenever the letter was received, August 11th is obviously long after the 45-day period. So I, I think the board needs to understand what that date came from and what the actual requirement is to do something. Looking at the resolution, it just says that you're gonna have an action plan in place, and perhaps all you have to do is have a plan in place, not the actual districts drawn by August 11th, I think you need clarification on that. And as a person who does not live in Costa Mesa, I, I wanted to point out, I don't think the board can just simply tag onto the process that took a year in Costa Mesa and use those districts as the districts for this special district, and just tack on the sections that are not in Newport Beach, and not in Costa Mesa, such as Santa Ana Heights, where there's a substantial, uh, population, because I know at least for cities, as Mr. Burns pointed out, one of the goals or actual requirements, I believe, of the Election Code is the districts have equal populations in them. So if you tack Santa Ana Heights onto the district adjacent to that in Costa Mesa, you're gonna have to adjust the other districts to match population, so it'll be a more involved process. Uh, this seems unusually rushed, if you don't have to do it by August 11th, and especially if it's not gonna have any practical effect for two years. And then although cities have to equalize populations, I don't know how it works for special districts, and I take it we're gonna learn about that, because unlike in a city which serves all its residents, the constituents of a special district are your ratepayers, and you have two distinct sets of those. So if I understand it, your district has a boundary, and you supply sewer service to, all, all of the resident, are all property owners who live within that district, but for reasons that are not entirely clear to me, uh, you oversee the trash, solid waste collection of only a subset of those. Uh, so if your constituents are ratepayers, I'm not sure how you're gonna draw districts that have equal populations, have ratepayers in each district, because you have the two sets, and they can't be equal for both. So I think that's gonna be another problem. And then, uh, Mr. Burns pointed out, he was planning to have a closed session discussion of this with you at your, for your next board meeting. Uh, I would point out, while you're legally allowed to do that, because there's a threat of, of litigation, this is pretty generic litigation that's going on here, and I, I'm not sure if you can have a closed session, why you would want to have that, I think the public would be quite interested in what the issues are, and I don't know who you would be protecting with the closed session. And then finally, the resolution itself seems to have been prepared a little bit hastily, and you might wanna look at the first few lines of it. The second, and, the third and fourth lines have a number of typos in it, the word remedy is misspelled, uh, the first two words of the third and fourth lines are run together. And again, the body of the thing, promising, promising to have a remedy in place, honor before August 11th, I think you need to understand what exactly you are promising to have by then. This says that that is the action plan, I, I personally don't know that the action plan has to be actually adopting the district boundaries, perhaps it does, perhaps it doesn't, I don't know. Thank you.
I could, I was looking for the typos, but I could, uh, I could answer the one, a couple of questions. The 90 days comes from the Elections Code, and, uh, the other is, when, why does it kick in the next time? And that's just the mechanics of what the, um, registrar needs the time to absorb the district and set up the mechanism for the voting and all that, they, they can't process it in time, so that's, as soon as we could get it in place would be, uh, 2020.
As far as the August 11th, August 11th date, that's 90 days from when we receive the notification from the attorney.
Yeah. That's correct.
One other question I had on that, the fact that we had already discussed this, and I think we've had these conversations, the fact that we had already sort of developed Citizens Advisory Committee to be looking at this, does that mean we don't have to pay this attorney the $30,000?
Well, I don't think we're gonna just send him a check for $32,000, we'll, we'll explore those defenses, and he has to prove that he's entitled to $32,000 anyway, so it's just not, I wrote a letter, so give me $30,000.
And the other, one of Mr. Moser's points, I'm, I don't know about the other four, I can only speak for myself, but I'm not planning on tagging along the city of Costa Mesa's plan, because it's, it's, it's different. As, as was stated, we have ratepayers outside of the city of Costa Mesa that need to be accommodated in this, because I believe they still vote on us, don't they? Because they're ratepayers?
Yes, that's why we hired a demographer.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, the demographer must know, obviously, she knows that that's the situation.
We'll have our own, uh, our own report and our own basis for doing what we're doing.
Yeah, okay. Uh, but, but, but I'm, I don't know about you guys, but I, I don't wanna follow, I don't wanna tag along with what the city, Costa Mesa, I have no intention to.
Our boundaries are different, we have part of, part of county, you know, over by Pacific Street, you know, that's not part of the city.
What I'm interested is that we have a handle on that boundary thing.
No, that, that's what they're talking about.
And I think the demographer will, and we'll be able to talk to her on the, on the 24th. Want to get a comment? I'll say. Go ahead, Rob.
I believe that our state's population, 116,000, 700 people, is really, I mean, that, you know, it's the Costa Mesa population, but, but we have not really, um, moved to the, the, and talking about boundaries, and some of those people, that, like, we have to do one of those steps to monitor, to actually come up with a population, and, 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 and more, that we really have two databases, you have the sewer, same rate, and, and, and the special election, they, they, obviously, like, all of them.
I think the Santa Ana Heights population, we estimated was around 7,000 people, so it is, it is a substantial number. And, you know, they got the vote, we, we have a wild ass guess, we have a guess estimate based on our concerns about their voting and one of the recent elections.
We still have a motion on the floor and a second, if we can make those corrections, if there's spelling corrections.
Fix the typos?
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Motion and second, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero to adopt the resolution. Okay. Um, any oral communications or comments for any of the...
Um, Hank Hornschoff's funeral is, uh, Saturday?
Friday, 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 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock. Hank is obviously a very distinguished gentleman in the community, in Lions Club, and, uh, he'll, he's sorely missed.
Maybe six years old when he passed. They make it 66.
What, what time is his funeral?
11 o'clock at Harvard View.
President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Hornschoff was one of those responsible for the Costa Mesa County District putting up sewer pipelines, and Eric Park, I understand, it all the way to the front door of the railroad.
Yes, he was.
First name, sir?
Yeah, Hank was, uh, you know, I...
Art and I had something to do with that, too.
That's exactly correct.
Hey, I, I've known Hank since I was five years old, and, you know, I ran around with his kids and everything, and, of course, Hank and my dad were good friends, and, uh, Jim's right, he's gonna be sorely missed, he just, he's gonna be missed at Monahan's a lot, too, I appreciate it. Okay. He has his own chair. Uh, any other, anything else, anything else from staff? Good meeting, appreciate it, and we will adjourn.